Okay, if I can get everybody's attention, we'll get started. We gave a full agenda tonight. Thank you all for being here. Ms. Whitby, want to call a roll?
Yes, sir. Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor is absent. Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Hite.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Aquorum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to stand while Councilmember Robinson says a prayer and pledge.
Let's bow our heads, please. Lord, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to take care of business on behalf of the residents and citizens of North Little Rock. I ask that you would lead us and guide us in our decision-making as we move forth tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I plead with a record for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you very much. Communications, I want to pull six, seven, and eight. Anybody else have any to pull?
Well, that's the ones I wanted too.
Me too.
Okay. All right, how about a motion to approve one through five?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, do you want it by title or read?
Now, hold on just a minute. I'm gonna... I know Bruce Waller's not in the audience, but Bruce spent 20 years on the Parks and Recreation Commission. I wanted to tell him thank you for his 20 years of service. And our young engineer, David Cook, has been offered a really good opportunity and is gonna leave us at the end of this week. So, David, we wish you all the luck in the world, so you were a good employee and we're glad to have served with you. On number...
Mayor, can I just add to your comments about Bruce? I've known Bruce since we served together in the National Guard back in 1969 down at Fisher Armory. He's spent a lot of time at our house, having dinner with Becky and I, and I've been proud to know him. And he's done an absolute fabulous job serving on the Parks and Rec Commission, and he's gonna be hard to replace, so...
Absolutely. I'm gonna go out of norm and ask the next three to be read in their entirety. Ms. Whitby?
Okay, number six.
Please.
Okay, I'm gonna take my time, too.
Okay.
Okay.
We're no hurry.
Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council... Councilmembers, for the last six months, my office has gathered public input from residents regarding the official name for our future downtown public space economic development project at Sixth and Main Streets, next to the North Little Rock Heritage Center. We have had contests, public votes, and I've personally heard from hundreds of our residents about the issue. After opening up the contest for proposed names, we received over 100 suggestions. From the beginning, those proposed names from residents often incorporated the Argenta name. Considering the extensive branding and marketing that has conducted... has been conducted for the past two decades by the downtown council, I am not surprised that our residents associate the new space with the Argenta name and location. When it comes to public voting, on the six finalists selected by the naming committee, we received more than 600 votes. The winning selection of the public vote was Argenta Plaza, and nearly 80% of the voters chose a name that included Argenta. Less than 20% of the voters chose a name that did not use Argenta in some fashion. I've always viewed this project as one of the most important and impactful economic development opportunities we have been able to create for North Little Rock residents. Purpose of this project is to draw people into our city and create a thriving downtown that helps all of our neighborhoods prosper. Downtown Argenta is unique in that it belongs to all of us, from Rose City to Amboy and Windsor Valley to Bearin Cross. Downtown Argenta belongs to all of us. So with great deference to public vote results and to the important role that marketing plays in our community's economy, my intention is to officially name the project Argenta Plaza. I will proceed with notifying the public and our Convention and Visitors Bureau upon your acceptance of this communication. Sincerely, Joe A. Smith, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Comments? Ms. Ross?
Well, yeah, I've heard from a few people that, you know, that they weren't necessarily in favor of Argenta because they didn't feel like that was inclusive of all of North Little Rock residents, even though their tax dollars were paying for it. But with that said, we did have the public vote, and I think that everybody had the chance to vote. So, that being said, I just wanted to make sure we realize that not everybody felt that that included all of North Little Rock.
Thank you very much.
So if there's any way that we can make sure that everyone feels that this is their plaza, we need to do everything we can.
Well, downtown belongs to everybody in every city. I feel very confident in that, and probably more so than any individual neighborhood anywhere else. So, I'm real comfortable with it. We spent a lot of years branding Argenta as a location. You know, we don't have to... When we run ads or, you know, trying to bring people downtown, we don't have to say, "Argenta Plaza on Main Street in downtown." Everybody knows where Argenta is. So, I think it really is gonna help us produce the excitement that we want. But I understand your point. How about a motion? Mr. Hite?
A motion... A motion normally on these communications to accept and file, but I just think this needs something a little bit more special.
Well, we could certainly do a resolution if you want to at the next council meeting. But, I mean, I think it's our opinion legal that accepting this communication would be official enough, but...
Is that...
Yes, it would. It does not need to be done by resolution, accepted, and filed, and the communication will make it official.
All right, then I'll make that motion then that we accept and file.
Okay. Do that, second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number seven?
Please call it, read it by name. Read the whole thing.
Read the whole thing. Mayor Joe A. Smith announces Scott Springer, 37-year veteran, North Little Rock Electric Department employee, as the new general manager of the city-owned electric department. North Little Rock, Arkansas, February 26th, Mayor Joe A. Smith announced today that he has selected Scott Springer to lead the 130-employee city-owned utility, effective this coming May. The current general manager, James Bray, recently announced his expected retirement, which will be effective May 29th of this year. In his retirement letter to the mayor, Bray expressed his intention to always be available to assist the city in the electric department. "I trust Scott," said Mayor Smith. "I didn't need any convincing in deciding to ask Scott to take over the responsibilities of this very demanding and crucial position, and judging by his past performance at the electric department, he's going to do a great job for us as the general manager. It will be difficult to fill James Bray's exceptionally qualified shoes, but if anyone can, it will be Scott. He knows our electric department inside and out," said Bray. "The energy market has become extremely complicated. I relied on his expertise plenty of times, and I have complete confidence in handing over the reins to someone with such great skill set. We have a great team here at North Little Rock Electric, and I'm proud to be a part of it," said Springer. "Our industry is going through some changes, but employees, residents, and the city council are still counting on us to run the best electric utility we can. I appreciate Mayor Smith's confidence and look forward to trying every day to help our team deliver positive results." Scott Springer, a 37-year employee with the North Little Rock Electric Department, began work in 1981 as a groundman and has served in several different positions, including the past four years as the Assistant General Manager. He will begin work as General Manager on May 29th, and his new salary as General Manager is yet to be determined.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
The... Scott, stand up. Scott's here with his wife, Susan. Thank you for being here. Scott, there is no doubt at all that you can handle this job. It's kind of been our plan for the last two or three years because we knew James was going to retire, and Scott's been eager to learn even more than he already knows, and we're not gonna miss a beat. We spent two days last week in Heber at a management retreat for electric, and I had a... You know, any questions I might have had about his capabilities and knowledge of what's going on were erased because he was right on top of everything. We think we've assembled a very good staff behind him, and I think we're gonna go to new levels if we can get better than James at all. James, thank you for your service. Scott, thank you in... Before you begin your trip in come May, but we appreciate you. And Susan standing by your side and giving you the support when you have to get up at 3:00 in the morning and go to work, so...
Thank you very much. We're glad to have you on our team.
Did he get a second to his... I'll second that.
How about a second?
There was one.
We got a second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number eight?
Please read it.
This is to Mayor and City Council. Fit to Live, the city of Little Rock and Metro Plan have been working on a bike-share proposal for the last year now. Initially, we were told that the program would be free to both cities. After a long and tedious RFP process, we narrowed our search down and picked a company. Company that all entities chose was not the same design as we had originally discussed, but it was a better concept. The new company has a better bike design and has a better way to connect with the bikes using smart technology. The new bike and new design do come at a cost to each city. The city of Little Rock has pledged to invest $45,000 per year for three years into the program. Unfortunately, if we do not invest any money into the program, we do not get any of the bikes on our side of the river. I feel that this would not be good considering North Little Rock is better equipped for biking than the city of Little Rock. The city of North Little Rock is being asked to invest $20,000 a year for three years into the program. This money will help with operating and equipment costs. The bike-share program is a great way to attract visitors to our city and keep our citizens healthy as well. The bikes are easy to rent and very hard to steal. This program could connect Little Rock and North Little Rock when it comes to visitors and help boost our visibility and bring a different feel to our city. Please consider this investment into our city, and I look forward to hearing back from you. Sincerely, Isaac Henry, Fit to Live Director.
Thank you very much. Mayor, did this catch you by surprise? No. Not like this. This program, you know, started out at Metro Plan, and we were told on the front end... I think I even told you all about it a year or so ago, that it was gonna be of no cost to either city. And once they went out for RFPs, they realized that the... We're a little bit too big for some small, little bitty rental bicycle companies because it's pretty complicated in technology and apps and all that stuff. So, when they finally... The selection committee over there finally made their decision, it came with a caveat that there was going to be a cost to us and Little Rock. Little Rock's agreed to pay 45, I think, and they want us to pay 20. Is that right, Isaac? So, I didn't want to go any further with this. They'll do it with Little Rock alone. But I didn't want to... I didn't want to go any further unless I had a pretty good feel that you guys were with me on it, so that's why I brought it up. So, question?
How many bikes will North Little Rock get, and what is the rental fee?
I was...
Is this what Conway's doing?
Conway's done it. Bentonville's done it.
Right, Conway does have a program. We'll have 50 on our side. They'll have about 100 on their side.
And then the rental fee would be?
They hadn't gave us the exact rental fee, but they're saying somewhere between like $11 and $15.
So the rental fee won't actually pay for the bike?
I'm sorry?
So the rental fees are not gonna cover the cost? They're needing an extra $65,000 or basically $20,000 a year to get on both sides then?
Yeah, and then what you do is they... It's an app that you download, and you download the bike from the app, and then you rent it and drive it wherever you want to drive it, and they have docking stations all over the city in both Little Rock and North Little Rock.
Okay, so... And then they're dropped off at a dock... Another docking station?
You can drop them over any docking station.
Okay. So, there will always be some then in North Little Rock?
There will always be bikes on both sides.
Okay, 'cause I'm just... If everybody docks them in Little Rock, then North Little Rock is left without bikes. I'm just curious how that works.
And they have certain cubes to where if a docking station is full, you can't dock it there anyway. And most people will be, you know, driving from the place where they rented it at and then taking it back to the same place.
Back to the same place, so...
Isaac, I got a question. And I'm gonna ask this question because nobody else will, but let's say I want to put that thing in my truck and take it home. What keeps me from doing that?
But it has actually a death prevention system inside of the bike, and you can take it home in your truck, but then you're gonna have somebody knocking on your door and saying, "You have our bike."
Well, I just wondered...
Might be Chief Davis, too.
Okay.
They have GPS built into them and the whole bit. They know where they are at every moment.
Okay.
Mr. Hite?
This is a... This bike-share or rental program is a wave that's going across the nation. I think in any of the cities that we've been to for meetings, you've seen this. In larger metropolitan cities, it's used a lot. Cities like North Little Rock, it won't be utilized as much, but with us having the Plaza in North Little Rock, this is a natural for us, for people to rent a bike here, maybe, you know, in whatever... In the city of North Little Rock, and ride around a little bit and come back or whatever we want to do to it. But I think... I think it would be a... You know, we have... We got the Bicycle Friendly Community Designation back in 2009, and we've maintained that. And I think if we don't participate in this, it'd kind of be a step backwards for the city of North Little Rock. And I think we ought to seriously consider saying yes to this program. I know that Auburn White's over there, she just wants to say something.
You want to start it?
I think it would be... I think it would behoove us to seriously consider this.
Okay. Ms. White?
I just... One question. What areas in North Little Rock will these stations be put in?
We haven't got them locked down yet, but we... I rode around with Lindsey West, who is with Bantam Group, that is bringing the bikes to Little Rock and North Little Rock. And we said, "By the Plaza, definitely by the baseball park." And we went down Rockwater where there are, you know, close to the River Trail, where people will be, you know, ride bikes at. And so we hadn't locked them down. That'd be something that we would probably put up out to the people and ask, "Hey, what would y'all like docking station for bikes at?"
Was there any discussion of... In Levy, in that area where the trail is?
I mean, that's definitely open for discussion because they actually have a trail there as well, so that's absolutely...
Ms. Ross?
Thank you.
So we're looking at basically $6,666 a year. Would this something that would come out of Fit to Live's budget?
It's $20,000 a year.
$20,000 a year? I thought you said for three years. It's $20,000 a year for...
A year.
$20,000 a year?
It costs a lot more than that, so they actually have corporate sponsors that are gonna sponsor the bikes. The bikes will be ours after the six years are up. The bikes will be ours, the cities. But, yeah, so it's $20,000 a year, which covers operating costs and equipment.
Little Rock's paying 45 a year. We praying 20 a year.
So we're basically $60,000 for three years.
Three years.
Can we do one year at a time? If we don't like it, we can back out?
I can definitely look into that.
Mayor, I'm gonna say this. It was funny, the other night we were at the Chamber banquet, and my table just happened to have a conversation about folks in their late teens. I'm talking, you know, 19, 18, haven't even cracked the driver's book. Got no interest in driving. I realize that that's different than, you know, what generally the entire council, you know, how we were raised, or, you know, what was the norm, if you will. You know, when we were young people, at 14, by gosh, you were down there... I remember at the Lehman Library getting a book, and you were studying hard. And one of the things we just have to realize is that, you know, those folks of that age, you know, anywhere from 18 to 24, you know, they rely a lot on public transportation or someone else to get them from point A to point B. I get this is an expensive program, you know, but I could see some folks using it out at Burns Park, maybe someplace in Park Hill, Levy. You know, we got the trail there. We're extending the trail in Levy. This complex of apartments we're getting ready to build, you know, adjacent to the Plaza, I would imagine are gonna be filled with individuals who would be more apt to use those than say someone like me on the council. It just... As tough as it is to spend that $60,000, I just think it's something we need to look at. I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, but I do know that there is a tide that has turned and probably turned for several years. We just haven't recognized it, or maybe we have, where, you know, folks in that age just... Getting a car and getting a license is just not that big a deal. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I think we were gonna have to appropriate the money anyway, so if you approve this communication tonight and accept it, then I will ask Ms. Scott to prepare legislation at the next council meeting to appropriate the money, and then that'll give us a couple of weeks for you guys to chat some more with Isaac and try to answer your questions, and then we'll vote on it next meeting.
I would definitely like to see one year and see the, you know, stats on it. How many are rented? How many are docked in North Little Rock before we jump in with $60,000?
From one year in each ward, give it 5,000. One year.
Now, let's answer all the questions. Y'all feel free to get with Isaac, and we'll try to get any questions you have between now and next council meeting.
Thank you.
How about a motion to accept?
Move accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Mayor, I've gotten two texts so far that the sounds are really... I don't know if it's on AT&amp;T, but on Comcast, the sound's all mumbled and jumbled up, so just to let you know. Did you get that, too?
No. Mr. Billings, are you hearing that? The sound on Comcast is not very efficient. See if you can check on it for me. Okay, is that all communications?
Yes, sir.
No, sir? Yes, sir?
Sir.
Well, let's just keep going then.
The public hearings you're going to convene when the items are called, so unfinished business? R-1811?
Hold it, please.
Okay. New business? R-1839, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Okay.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Jim McKenzie to the Board of Commissioners of Central Arkansas Water.
How about a motion?
So moved. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1840, Mayor Smith.
A resolution appointing Gartner D. Burton to the North Little Rock Housing and Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals Signboard.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Hold on. Ms. Whitby, is Gardner here? I see Gardner.
He was not able to make it.
Okay. Well, we'll thank him for his service in the future, so he's... I spent a lot of time on the phone talking to him about what the responsibilities of the signboard were, and he was ready to take on the challenge. So, thank you, Gardner, for doing that. Okay?
R-1841, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution amending Resolution Number 8340 to approve appointment of Deputy Chief of Staff Charlie Baxter to perform the duties of Mayor of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Let me explain that to you. We had, you know, we have drills every two or three months that Charlie's, of course, is in charge of. And in our last big drill that we had 30 days ago, we had to call in, in our drill, the National Guard. And in order to do that, all we have to do is have a verbal command from me. And a year or two ago, if y'all remember, we gave Chief Bradley the authority in my absence to do the same thing. So, if I was gone, out of town, then Chief Bradley could order the National Guard in also. Not order, but request the National Guard. Well, we were sitting around there, you know, all chatting, and said, "Well, what would happen if the mayor and Chief Bradley were gone?" And we said, "Well, that'll never happen," you know, because we try to plan our trips and everything else, you know, around... Well, in March, I've gotta go to the National League of Cities. Chief Bradley's going on family holiday, and one day, while I'm flying in, he's flying out. And so, you know, as y'all know how much respect I have for Charlie, he's been our deputy chief since I've been mayor, and even though he's retired, working a couple of days every once in a while, he's very well-versed in our emergency situation. He's got 40-plus years' experience. He's the most level-headed decision-maker I've ever seen in my life. And so, if that one day a year or two years ever pops up, Charlie will have the authority to request the National Guard. So that's the reason for this legislation. Questions?
Okay, so I called Mrs. Scott today because I was just curious, you know, what would his salary be, because currently, you know, he's paid hourly.
It wouldn't change. It wouldn't change.
Okay, but then here's my question too, you know, you could both be gone for a week, there's always a possibility of something like that happening, so why, would you continue to pay hourly? Because we know the mayor's hours, it's not an eight-hour job.
Right.
So I was just curious if there would be something-
Well, the only time Charlie would be activated is if there was an emergency.
So if you're both out of town?
We're not going to be out of town for a week.
Okay.
Charlie, I think last month, eleven days, you worked eleven days?
Yeah.
And that's a lot. I mean, it's usually a day a week.
I'm just thinking long, um, anything's possible.
Remember what we did, if you'll remember, you know, we used to have an emergency services director.
Right.
And we had a disaster director, if you will, so we had two people. Uh, so when we reorganized over there, we kept, uh, you know, Leonard took over as nine-one-one director, and so instead of having a full-time emergency operation and a trainer, then we asked Charlie to stick to us. So we're, we're getting that job filled by one or, one or two days a week, rather than a full-time with benefits. So I think dollar-figure-wise, we're much lower than we were when we started this whole thing, so. Ms. Robinson?
And so, this deputy chief of staff, the only time that they will work, that he would work is when both of you are out of town, and even though this says perform duties of the mayor in absent of you guys, but it would only be to call out, and I'm just trying to get some clarity here, to call out the emergency people in that situation, right?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, unless he had other work to do. You know, I mean, it's a humongous job to organize our disaster plans, and, um, uh, so if, if he had reason to work that day or that week, working on his normal part-time job, then he would. But we're just trying to get covered so that somebody has the authority and the knowledge to activate and request for coverage from the National Guard.
And there's no additional pay? This, this would be what, other duties as assigned?
Right. Yeah, I mean, he, he's the number-one guy in the, in the EOC, so Charlie's the one that does all the training, he's the one that manages the EOC if I'm not there, and, um, or Chief Bradley's not there, and he knows more about it than any of us, so, uh, I'd be nervous if he wasn't there.
And then one final question, and I may have missed it, this, the title Deputy Chief of Staff, that's a newly created position, the title?
Five years ago.
Five years ago. I said I may have missed it.
Yeah.
Slept since then.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I could have left this out, but all of you have the same respect for Charlie as I do, it makes sense, because like I said, there is one day in two weeks that that is gonna happen, and it sure as the world would have a big tornado that day, and Danny and I'd both be in the air at the same time, so, uh, you know, we spent too much time in the last five years having the best disaster plan that any city, I guarantee you, in the state has, and I'm not gonna mess it up by not dotting my Ts and crossing my Is like we're doing right here.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes.
On the motion.
Um, I'm gonna add, because we didn't finish the title, in the absence of the mayor and the chief of staff, um, on the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the donation of certain real property located behind and adjacent to North Little Rock Fire Station Number Seven on McCain Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock from the Woodcrest Company, LLP.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-three, Mayor Smith.
So I want to say thank you to, uh, James Matthews' family and Woodcrest Company for, uh, for squaring that property up for us, so thank you. Go ahead.
A resolution amending the two thousand eighteen budget for the city of North Little Rock to reauthorize and include additional expenditures for specified departmental budgets.
I've got a motion, then we'll explain if anybody needs any, anything.
Move for adoption, there's an amendment also.
Second, have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Uh, on the, uh, adoption, uh, amendment?
Ms. Scott has the amendments.
Mayor and council members, um, I did put at everyone's desk a revised Exhibit A, there are two items that are highlighted. The first one was a purchase order in the Traffic Department, we had the wrong general ledger number on it. The second one is a purchase order for roof repair at the Rose City Community Center that I was unaware of, it had been keyed wrong, so wanted to make sure, since we had time, to go ahead and get these included in this amendment.
That's my amendment.
Okay, have a, do we have a second on the amendment to, for Exhibit A?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Um, just a quick question, Ms. Scott had referenced the highlights, so one of the highlights is under AIM, Genkor Inc., so disregard that?
No, it's, it is AIM.
Oh, okay.
It's the Rock's one.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, that's, uh, recreation.
Okay. Okay, on the motion to amend, Ross?
Do we need to fix that, if it's not AIM?
Um, I don't know. So, um, I'm so sorry, so Al beside thirty-five, that should say Recreation, and then AIM is forty-two. Okay.
Okay, so you get that amendment, so move AIM down, strike AIM typed and put in Recreation?
Yes, sir. On the amendment, Ross?
Yes.
White? Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to rehabilitate property located at two-two-two-five Findley Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
I think we've got a seventy-five thousand dollar bond, believe on that, um, so, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to rehabilitate property located at two-eight-zero-zero John Ashley Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
I've got a motion.
I move.
Have a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
I think this is the one we had to, what, the seventy-five thousand on?
Yes.
Okay, this is the one seventy-five.
Side by side, these two are side by side.
And the other one was thirty.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at seven-one-three North Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
I've got a motion.
I move.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on seven-thirteen North Vine? Seven-thirteen North Vine, yes ma'am, please identify yourself.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Keisha Cobb, and I am here to appeal to you on behalf of that property. I do have a, a handout, if you'd like it, it is to-
Um, just pass it around.
I'll pass it down, just give it to me.
Uh, again, my name is Keisha Cobb, I'm CEO of the Sustainability Project, I am partnering with Veterans Land Bank and other neighborhood organizations to appeal to the city on behalf of us all to hopefully turn this building into an East Argenta Heritage Center. It is located very near and close to our only two-year HBCU in the state, Shorter College. I have served as Miss Shorter College twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood as I've volunteered, uh, my time, and spent a lot of time with the children at some of the schools in the area and the churches, and, uh, in the absence of the owner of the home, my contractor has evaluated it by pretty much, uh, looking at the property estimated, what the cost would be to rehab the home, and hopefully turn it into a center that can be a pillar in the community instead of just another empty lot.
Is it a house, or is it a building?
It's a house, and it's located directly across from, uh, a house that's similar to it, about the same size, that Shorter College turned into a health and wellness center. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Robinson?
Um, Annie Double, Annie-
Hamilton. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, used to work at CPOA Jones High School. I went through that school, and she worked there at the time, and she was well-respected and looked up to in that community.
Wow.
So, uh, I, I just wanted to throw that out, and the people in that community probably remembers her.
Yes.
But I remember her.
Yes.
And she was active in that community.
Amazing.
Back in the sixties.
Is this a project that you're taking on, or is it a Shorter College project?
It's not a Shorter College project alone, the Shorter College Alumni Association, in which I am a member of, has been welcomed to have an office in the building, we will also have other, uh, rooms in the building to house offices for nonprofits, but it is a collective effort with other organizations, and we welcome any involvement from Shorter College.
All right, let me, um, here, my lawyer's getting nervous because I'm putting my lawyer hat on, but, you know, you don't own the property.
I do not, um, we have a contractor that is, uh, willing to, or apply for a permit to repair.
Yeah, but you have to own the property in order to repair it, and if, if the Annie Hamilton-
Just enough.
-family or estate owns it, you're gonna have to get the property from them-
Yes, sir.
First.
Okay.
And then you're gonna have issues there too, because if we condemn it tonight, you know, to transfer property, uh, condemned, and then all of a sudden, you're stuck with a piece of condemned property, so have you got any legal counsel, or talked to anybody about what they, what you should do?
Mm-hmm. I, I actually spoke with the, uh, city, the code, the, uh, city offices for, uh, code enforcement, before we even, you know, met about that specific property, and they informed me that either an heir, or Annie Hamilton herself, or a contractor could, um, appeal to the city on behalf of the property.
Now, if this is the same Annie Hamilton, maybe somebody else named Annie Hamilton, but she does have an heir, she has a daughter.
Mm.
And the daughter at that time, or a year or two ago, lived in that community.
Mm-hmm.
So she has a daughter and a couple of grandchildren, I believe.
Okay.
So she does have heirs, if it's the same.
Definitely willing to, uh, we're also aware that it's behind on taxes, uh, we're willing to work with the Commissioner of State Lands and diligently contact or, uh, get in touch with any heirs, so that we can make this project happen, we want the city to be abreast of our plans, and hopefully work with us should we contact anyone.
Ms. Ross?
The S.A. Jones Group probably are aware of her heir, if not, I'll give you the name of her heirs, if it's the same Annie Hamilton.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Ms. Ross?
I just want to get this straight with Legal, so if we go ahead and condemn this, you still have thirty days, so that would give her thirty days to get with the family, to get it deeded over to you, and to come in and sign a rehab agreement.
Okay.
Where you would put up the escrow, basically what it would cost if we had to tear the house down, if we had to raze the house, so you've got thirty days there to work with that, correct, Legal?
That is correct, um, there, uh, no demolition takes place for at least thirty days after a condemnation, uh, resolution passes, and that does give you an opportunity to, well, number one, your group would need to get ownership of the property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and come back to the city attorney's office with a plan to rehab the property, show that you have the financial ability to do so.
Yes.
And, um, and, and the ability to put up a bond for the demolition costs, in case the rehab does not work out, um, we, um, the resolutions that were just before this, that's what had happened with those properties.
Yes.
Is, um, they were condemned, but an owner was willing to rehabilitate them, and the city council, um, gave them the opportunity to do so.
Okay, okay.
You know where you're headed, you, you have to find the heirs and see if they'll sign the property over to you, if they will do that, before you close, you need to come down and talk to, to our legal department, and let them work up a rehab agreement with you on the front end, and then, and then you can go to closing.
Okay, I'm excited.
Sean, have you got something to add to that?
Uh, first I've heard of, so I'm not really sure what the property is owned, but odds are it's zone residential, so it's not set up for an office, and it will have to be brought up to commercial codes, so it's not bringing it up to residential codes, you'd have to bring it up to handicap accessibility, parking, and all the other stuff, so it's just not rehabbing a house, it's gonna be rehabbing a commercial structure. But it's odds are it's zoned wrong, so we may want to start there before, because if you get turned down on zoning, you're stuck with a condemned house.
Sean Spencer's our Director of Planning.
Yes.
Uh, why don't you call him tomorrow, maybe you can go sit down with him, and he can show you that, um, this is not gonna be easy, and, so you're gonna, this is gonna have to be a labor of love for you.
Yes.
Quick love, quick, quickly.
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Um, Mayor, I referenced, the pictures aren't showing, is there a reason, we don't have pictures?
I don't know. Think everybody in the room's on break?
I was told today that it wasn't work, that it wouldn't be working, that this is not working, the sound's still not working either, so, a lot of technical difficulties.
Well... If I had known that, I wouldn't have asked that question, but now we have to wait for the mayor to come back. He went to take care of that.
You want me to do it?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna wait. So FYI, next time, whoever knows that, let me know, so I won't ask.
It's broke. Official, official grueling, it's broke.
Mayor, this is kinda timely, I'd just like to let you know that because of our city, uh, Facebook page, we've got viewers in Omaha, Nebraska tonight.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Good. The, uh, y'all remember probably thirty days ago, our switcher broke, that's why all of our, uh, videos feeding from the back, it also feeds the audio, and that's what's causing the audio issue too. Uh, we've had our people in here, they've got these parts ordered, you know, the system is ten or twelve, thirteen years old, so it's not like it's a part that's on the shelf, so bear with us, watch us on Facebook, or maybe they'll be a little bit better. Okay, uh, forty-seven, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at one-eight-two-three Share Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Thank you very much, I've got a motion.
I move.
Second.
Second.
Second. Call a public hearing, eighteen-twenty-three Share, I know this family, I've talked to them on the phone, they know what's going on and, uh, understand their responsibilities. On the motion.
And you've called the public hearing?
I did, closed the public hearing, anybody else want to talk about eighteen-twenty-three Share, I'm sorry, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher? R eighteen forty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at one-one-four South Redwood Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So moved.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on one-fourteen South Redwood Street, one-fourteen South Redwood, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen forty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at one-two-six Marvin Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So moved, second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on one-twenty-six Marvin Street, one-twenty-six Marvin Street, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen fifty, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain property located at one-five South Avalon Drive in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance due to the accumulation of garbage, scrap materials, and rubbish on said property, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Have a second. Have a second. Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on fifteen South Avalon Drive, please identify yourself, sir.
My name is David Seaberry. Uh, I was doing good until I lost two fingers at work, and my hip, fell and broke my hip, but, um, the gentleman that's responsible for the biggest part of my problem is going in for, uh, inpatient rehab, I don't know what for, but he's already got people hired to come clean it up, and then all I can ask for is, or beg, I should say, uh, is, y'all's understanding for at least thirty more days, because he's gonna be in rehab for thirty days.
Well, you know, under our process, you will have a full thirty days, so-
Okay.
Uh, but you better work quick, because I know the, uh, uh, everybody's that they're with, in on this property, I think you've been to court, and the judge has fined you fairly seriously, and, uh, what was that fine, do you recall?
I haven't, I haven't, my income has been cut in half, I don't have the income to, to pay those.
No. Well, that's a deal between you and the court system, of course, but this is between the city council and you, so I, I think what probably we'll do tonight is go ahead and condemn it, and then you have thirty days to get it where it's, uh, where it should be, and then our code officers will come back out, and, uh, then we'll try to do a workaround, and we can undo a condemnation if we have to.
Well, I want to apologize to my neighbors, the city of North Little Rock and all, because it got out of hand while I was incapacitated, so to speak, and then the guy that was responsible for most of it, he's traveled back and forth to Branson, and he's gonna carry a lot of that stuff to Branson, Missouri, when he gets out of rehab.
Well, you better hope he gets out of rehab early.
Mayor, just for clarification, this is not a condemnation.
Thank, and so what is it?
What is it?
It's, um, declaring it to be a public nuisance and giving them thirty days to clean it up, um, the-
What happens if he doesn't clean it up?
Then, um, we send someone in to bring the property up to code, and then, uh, the next step would be to ask for a lien for the cost.
So this gives us permission to do the work on his property if he doesn't do it?
Yes.
Now, if we do that-
That was in the notice I received.
Whatever the, whatever it costs, will be, a lien will be put on your-
Have you any rough idea of the cost involved?
It won't be cheap.
Well, I knew that, but-
No, I don't know, I mean, you could probably do a lot cheaper yourself.
Well, my daughter, uh, lives down in Warren, she's supposed to be sending me a trailer, but I don't know when I'm supposed to get it.
Okay. We need to hurry, please. Ms. Ross?
This is my question on this, because this is, I've never seen this before, so, uh, if it isn't cleaned up by the property owner, it isn't cleaned up, then the city code enforcement will hire somebody to go and do it, code enforcement will do it, and then they'll put a lien on the property.
Right.
Which will go onto the, their tax record.
Right.
So when the taxes come due, that lien will be on the taxes, correct?
Right.
So here's my question. Okay, will code have a list, will whoever have a list of what they take and what they don't take, because we have, you know, we have pictures here from code, we've got a lot of pictures here, and it's really, really bad, I know if I lived next to this, I would not be happy at all, so, you know, some things are legal and some are not, so who makes the determination and who, you know, do they just come in and take his things? I mean, I don't understand how this works, could we get somebody from code, or Legal, or, Bill Brown's here, he, you know, he might be able to-
Who's got a good feel for that, council, do you have a feel for what we can take from his property, or what we cannot?
And who has the list, and I just-
What we're doing is, we're declaring all these items a public nuisance, and we would, if we do clean up, it's like we saw the TV show Hoarders, when you go out there, and the city's out there, and they got the dump trucks, and everybody to just haul all the stuff off, so if we have sanitation, we'd have all our man-hours, and then if we get a bill, if he doesn't abate it, we give him a bill, if he doesn't pay it, we come back in front of city council, we would certify that, and then we would have two options, one, we could put it on the, uh, tax bill and go through the, uh, assessor's office, or you could authorize us to foreclose on the whole property, so I think what we're doing is, we would be declaring everything on the outside, a nuisance, a public nuisance.
Okay.
It's not condemning structures, so it's a legal-
All right, so basically what we're doing tonight, starting the process.
Yes.
Okay, but this is, this is my question, like, there's a really nice Stanley ladder here, there's some really nice bicycles here, I mean, would they go in and just clear everything off of the whole property?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that we'd have to put those inside somewhere.
So anything that you don't put inside, then they would come and take it away, they clean up, and then they would, you would be charged for that, so.
A lot of the furniture that's in the carport, it's going to Missouri.
Okay. It needs to go really, really fast.
But it's gonna be thirty days before he even gets out of rehab.
And, and with respect to things like the ladder, um, outdoor storage of, um, those kind of materials is, uh, in violation of code, you can't, um, store those in the yard, so.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda like Debbie here, because I see, um, look like a four-wheeler and some other stuff, and it may not be enough room in the garage, because he has a car there in the garage and a lot of stuff, and I guess my concern, you know, that some of this stuff look like good stuff, look like a good garage sale would take care of some of it, but, I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, you, you've got a point there.
Well, as I say, the, the water tank that's been out there for, for a while, there was a bathtub out there inside, so I think we go after any structure, but there's a lot of things that, we've been in court with him, he's- There's a lot of things that, we've been in court with him, he's been assessed over, at one point, he's assessed thirty thousand dollars with fines, tenants, the herrings were assessed fine. And as I say, I don't know what else, it's your call, but...
I have no sympathy whatsoever. If he loses a fine ladder, then so be it, but...
And just for knowledge, we, we were gonna start this process previously, and then we cleaned up the whole front yard, had it all thick and span. We didn't file legislation, then we found out that we put a whole bunch of stuff in a back park, which you couldn't see. So we've been trying to work on and off with him since last summer. And I don't know, it's your, it's your call for the ultimate. That's why you make the decision. All I can do is to present you with another option.
I have a quick question. Did you reference a tenant? Is it, does he live there, or does he have a tenant?
He's owner, he has two tenants.
He has a tenant there? So I need to make sure he has a business license for his rental property.
That's correct.
I inherited...
Ms. White?
So, in this legislation, it says accumulations of garbage, scrap materials, rubbish on said property. So if something's not those things, which I see tools laying here, is that, what is that? How did...
He'll get them gone, I guarantee you, he'll get them gone. I mean, he's not gonna leave anything out there that's got any value to it. If he does, then it's too bad, so sad for him. We gotta clean that up. It's a great neighborhood, and he has ignored the law and the rules for a long, long time, so I'm prepared to start this ball rolling. On the motion.
Did you close the public hearing?
Mr. Baxter?
I mean, okay, so it's my understanding that there are several properties that we've had kind of the same issue with in the past, and they magically, or they're not an issue now. And going forward, is this a mechanism that we're gonna have in our hip pocket to use going forward?
We used it several years ago with the Safe Team. We use it probably more on commercial property than we ever have on residential, but it's the same tool. Bill, am I right?
So, well, the Safe Team would close properties down, but this is a tool for the state's cleanup. We have a lot of the options.
Okay. All right, does anybody else want, Yates, you wanna come up and speak? If you'll move over, sir, and let one of your other neighbors talk.
I'm Yates Phillips. I'm a current Sina Hill neighborhood chairman, or president, whatever you wanna call me. On behalf of the neighbors, they've expressed concern to me about this particular property. We have at some point discussed whether or not we should chip in and help. If there is some way that we can help David here, we'd be happy to do so. But it's our concern that the property is just gonna get moved from one location to another. At one point, in one of the rounds of cleanup from the, from the previous action with code enforcement, the property was just moved two blocks away and then moved back. North Little Rock has, is kind of a mecca for landlords. We have nearly half of the households in our city are rental properties. These are businesses, some are homeowners, as in this case. It's easy and profitable. We have the convenience of liberal curbside pickup, which is, makes everyone's life easy. But in this case, and in many cases, we need to do better. If assault and battery can translate into anger management classes being required, wouldn't this particular situation where it's somewhat of a public health and mental health issue, no offense, sir.
That's all.
Would, would that not then translate into counseling of some sort related to the matter? So we encourage the city to use this nuisance mechanism to resolve the issue.
Thank you. Anybody else here want to speak on fifteen South Avalon? Seeing none, not close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
And I will say, I did receive, and probably everyone else did, several emails from the neighborhood on this, too, in favor of this. Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thirty days, Mr. Sedbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or eighteen eleven, Mayor Smith, I mean, or eighteen fifty-one, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of cleanup lien to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1-506 North Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
How about a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on fifteen oh six North Vine on liens. Anyone here to speak on it? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Or eighteen fifty-two, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of cleanup lien to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 4408 School Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption. Second.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on forty-four oh eight School Street?
While this is not about this particular issue, it could be. It's worth noting that once a property is slated for this nuisance or condemnation, that no further code enforcement action is being taken. Requests for submitting code, further code violations past the point of the previous action are being rejected, or the people complaining are being told that no other code enforcement actions are gonna be taken because it's gonna be on the city council docket.
So thirty days.
Well, sure, like, well, I submitted a report, a repair app notice about one of these properties, and received a response back that no code enforcement action would be taken because it's gonna be brought up at city council meetings. So in general, there are more code enforcement violations than are known to us.
Plan starts today. Seeing nobody on forty-four oh eight School, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Or eighteen fifty-three, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the city, I'm sorry, with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption. Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on any of these liens, real properties? Close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, the, our former city attorney would not allow us to do these in a grouping, which would really save us a lot of time, but, you know, he's not here anymore, so...
The current city attorney will look into that.
Look into that, Amy, and see if you can do a, do a runaround on Jason's order last year, so.
I will certainly look at it, Mayor.
Okay.
Ordinance is oh eighteen fourteen, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing the city of North Little Rock Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District Number Thirty-eight, the Porches at Rockwater Project.
May the spin the readings. Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now you need to convene a public hearing.
I will do that as we speak. Anyone here to talk about the multipurpose improvement district number thirty-eight, the Porches of Rockwater? Beautiful, beautiful project. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Move for adoption.
And now?
Second.
And now?
And now on the motion, Ross?
I have a question. I'd ask for a map, because I like, I really, really like maps, and so can we amend this in? I know I told Legal A, but we already have an exhibit A, so you can call it whatever exhibit you want. CD, and this would be the, an exhibit on this eighteen fourteen and eighteen fifteen. It would be the same map.
And you said it's exhibit B?
I think it's exhibit C. We have an exhibit A and B, so this would be exhibit C.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion to amend in exhibit C, which is an aerial map, it looks like. Ms. Ross, how about a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption, it's amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
I have one more thing, too. So we have two of these. We have fourteen and fifteen. Fourteen is the improvement district, and then fifteen is the recreational improvement district. Okay.
No, separate.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. White?
Yes. White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen fifteen, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing the city of North Little Rock Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District Number Thirty-nine. Did I just read that one, or is it the same?
It's a...
Different.
It's a spin all.
Okay. District Number Thirty-nine, the Porches at Rockwater Recreation District.
Move to suspend all readings. Second.
Motion to suspend. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And now you want to amend in exhibit C on this one?
It's the same map for both.
So that's your motion?
How about a motion to, how about a second on that motion?
Second.
A motion to amend, Ms. Ross, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption, it's amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen sixteen, Mayor Smith and Councilmember White?
And, and just one minute, I made a mistake. City Councilmember Ross had also asked to be a sponsor on this, so if we could add her in, and I, and my apologies to Ms. Ross.
That objection? Thank you.
An ordinance changing the name of Fairfax Drive to East McCain Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock?
May the spin the readings.
A motion and second, suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Just like to make comments about Fairfax. Very familiar with Fairfax, as a matter of fact. I would go down Fairfax to get to Northeast High School back in the day, so, you know, I've been around a while. But I know that the Fairfax family was, is well-recognized in the McAlmont community. Now, changing the name from Fairfax to McCain is reasonable to me. However, we have that bridge there, and I've been getting phone calls about, what about our history? And history does mean a lot to some people. So in changing the street to McCain, and y'all, you know, when Martin Gibson was on the council, you know, this came up, and we had some opposition to changing the name, Mr. Thomas and I did, from people from that area. So what I ask, and it's my understanding that there is an opportunity to name that bridge Fairfax Crossing. And I think that the community would really be happy if that bridge is renamed. I know we say we're gonna do it, but we need to do it if it's at all possible, because the name Fairfax means a lot in that African-American community.
We have worked on that with both council members, and we all agree that we will put a sign up there that designates the crossing as Fairfax Crossing on both sides.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
And in, in the person who's been the lead on this has kind of asked if we could just have a small ceremony of some kind when, when that's done, when the weather's a little, a little better. So that is the plan.
Ms. Ross?
I just would agree with what Councilmember Robinson said, because that was one of the reasons, and, you know, that we, we waited so long, and as far as our emergency services, you know, police, fire, Google Maps, as far as the location of that, you know, we've only got one piece of property left on there. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose the heritage and the family name of Fairfax, and that's why that bridge will definitely be called Fairfax Crossing.
Thank you.
Mayor.
This is ironic, but as late as last night at a meeting at Lakewood United Methodist Church, that was brought up to me, had we considered naming that overpass
Longcoming.
the bridge.
Absolutely.
Fairfax Crossing, and I said, well, you know, I can always ask, well.
Go back to.
I'm a supporter of that amendment, so.
Way ahead of you.
Yes, I have, I've got a comment for everybody. Currently, it's, the highway department uses a standard type, it's called a Type C nameplate. We're planning to use Fairfax Crossing for that, but I wanted to ask, is there a reason to look at doing something a little bit larger?
I don't know, let me look at it and see.
I'll send it to you.
Okay. Ms. Ross.
You just know, Councilmember White, now we want something pretty.
Of course. Okay, where are we, Ms. Whitby?
We are ready for a motion to adopt.
Oh, Mayor, did you convene a public hearing on this yet?
Not yet.
Oh, you need to convene a public hearing.
Anybody here to speak on the name change of East McCain, from Fairfax to East McCain? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
There is no motion.
How about a motion? Motion to adopt.
Come in. Second.
Got it, go.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1817 Mayor Smith.
Just one minute, back on 15, did, did we vote on, did you all vote on the emergency clause on that, and I got behind on my notes? You did?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can we do a public hearing on 15?
I can't remember.
I can't tell you on that.
Let's do a public hearing.
Want to do one just to be on the safe side?
Anyone here to speak on the recreational multipurpose improvement district number 39? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
And it will stand as previously adopted.
And the emergency was called, okay.
All right, O-1817, we're going to read it one time, council?
We are going to read it, yeah.
An ordinance adopting net metering and distributed generation rules for the North Little Rock Electric Department?
All right, what, what this is basically, an executive summary, is it deals with people that install solar, like VA and L'Oreal. Exactly, you know, the rules need to be for everybody the same, so we've drawn these up. I think we need a public hearing at the next council meeting, and, and our electric council is here if anybody wants to ask Jason questions on it. Seeing none, we'll hold that legislation until the next meeting, and we'll have a public hearing at that time, Ms. Whitby.
Okay. O-1818.
Hold on a minute, Yates, out of order here.
May I just say that as a solar proponent, I support this effort to allow residents to use net metering. Distributed generation is the way of the future, and for a secure city with a good electrical policy, it's what we need to do.
We appreciate your passion, as always, but let's try to go by the rules. Okay, 17.
Councilmember Harris.
Please call.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 5300 North Shore Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from O-1 to I-2 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
First reading.
What's your pleasure?
Third reading.
Your pleasure.
Move to spend the rules in place.
Spend it, read it.
Second.
Ratings.
A motion by, by Mr. Harris to suspend all readings, and seconded by Mr. Baxter.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
And Sean can tell you all about it.
A motion to adopt, how about it?
Okay.
Second.
Questions? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1819, Councilmembers Taylor and Robinson.
Suspend all readings.
Need to read it first.
Oh.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 4262 Bachem Pike in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R-3 to C-4 Zone by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property.
Second. A motion and second, suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is this your stuff, Bobby? Is this your stuff?
Yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, it is.
So we're, we're going to make him street legal, is that what we're doing?
We can.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1820, Councilmember Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting streets and drainage improvements within Village East subdivision in the city of North Little Rock.
And first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Move for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ross.
I noticed that, you know, normally we'll have a bond on new streets, but these streets, you know, I think it's saying that they're like 10 years old. Is there anything, I remember us doing one recently, I don't remember, on streets that are older like this, as far as the repair that's needed now on the streets?
Well, this, this neighborhood changed hands several times, I think there was a repossession, bank repo and all that stuff, and, and the, the acceptance of the streets and drainage 10 years ago got lost.
Okay.
And then we got out there and we had to do a little bit of a repair, we realized that we hadn't dedicated those streets. Would have done it 10 years ago, I'm very, very positive, it's a nice neighborhood. And so in order to be street legal, we had to come back in and adopt them.
Okay, so is.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Hey.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. Now we have public comments section. Jimmy Yard, James Yard. All right. Larry Westmoreland, 2020 West Third.
Mayor, council. My name is, my name is Larry Westmoreland, and I'm with the Veterans Land Bank. And I'm here today to find out if, is there any way possible that the Veterans Land Bank might be able to work with the city? What we do is work with veterans, help them get their credit straight, so they would be able to purchase a home. We take land, we take donations of land. I was here today to see if maybe the city might have land available that we could use that land as seed money for veterans who have served the United States Military to purchase a home with. There are certain programs around the state now, and land banks that different cities have, and I was here today to see if the city of North Little Rock had such an initiative.
Well, I can certainly answer that quickly, I think. We do not have a land bank, we've discussed it in the past. We do have properties, numerous properties that have liens on them that are probably worth less than what the liens are. One of our best friends is Habitat for Humanities, and we love to work with them to try to get them cheap land so that they can build nice homes for, for people. So I would think, I would say, and I think I speak for everyone else, that if you've got an opportunity to do some wonderful things for our veterans, we're right there with you, and we'll find some property and, and try to figure out how to get it, get some great use out of it by helping the veterans. So why don't you write down the name, Robert Birch? He's on our, our staff, and contact Robert in the next day or two, and we'll start some dialogue on what you guys are looking for and how we can help you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
One, one moment, sir.
The land that you receive, the funding or whatever to build the home,